Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Alright, would you please join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the April 25th, 2016, regular meeting of the town council. Mr. Rooney is the only member of council absent this evening. He had a prior engagement. All other members of council are present, as well as our first electman. Very bright over there.
Yes.
I know, it's all over there.
Moving on to the consent calendar. Are there any comments to the consent calendar? Mr. Kapoor.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, a check, a donation of mine is under C.
Okay, noted for the record. Ms. Reddick, would you just note that for the record? Any other comments? I don't, I don't think that anyway affects my ability to pass the consent calendar with that objection. There's enough members of council present, absent, that comment, and what would be an abstention on that vote from Mr. Kapoor if we voted in that process.
Yes. I believe there's probably a, I'm sure there's a donation of mine as well in the food pantry. I believe we've come across this before.
Right, yeah. So anybody who feels like they have a need to note that for the record, please do, but the only time I see that being an issue is if we didn't have a forum present, we couldn't pass the consent calendar, taking into consideration that, um, that process. So with seeing no other comments, I'll pass the consent calendar noting Mr. Kapoor's comment. Moving on to communications. A, memo from the first electman to town council chair dated April 6th, 2016 regarding an appointment to the Board of Health. B, memo to the registrar voters from the superintendent of schools with a copy to the town council chair dated April 7th, 2016 regarding the use of school facilities for polling. C, memo from the director of health to the town council chair with a copy to the first electman dated April 7th, 2016 regarding the health department proposed fee schedule for the 2016-2017 period. D, memo from the human resources director to the first electman with a copy to the town council chair dated April 19th, 2016 regarding a transfer of funds. E, memo from the first electman to the town council chair dated April 20th, 2016 regarding donations to the food pantry, friendship funds, Sprint from Monroe, police department, and the animal control unit of the police department. F, memo from the first electman to the town council chair dated April 20th, 2016 regarding a donation to the Sprint from Monroe from a local business. G, letter of authorization from the first electman to the town council, Board of Finance, and the legal voters of Monroe dated April 20th, 2016 recommending the adoption of the resolution regarding an appropriation and bond authorization of $810,000 for the purchase of trucks and equipment for the Department of Public Works. H, letter of authorization from the first electman to the town council, Board of Finance, and legal voters of Monroe dated April 20th, 2016 recommending the adoption of the resolution regarding an appropriation and bond authorization of $100,000 for the Stephanie Elementary School Oil Tank Removal and Replacement Project. And I, memo from the first electman to the town council chair dated April 21st, 2016 regarding the State of Connecticut DOT agreement resolution related to the reconstruction of Pepper Street and the multi-use trail. One question of the first electman, communications under D. Ms. Lombardi's not present, and it's not on our agenda this evening, and there's no action on it on our agenda this evening regarding the transfer, so do you have any input on that, whether that's...
Um, I thought she was gonna be here. Last I spoke to her, she was gonna be here, so...
Well, if she shows up, we'll add it. You know, someone can make a motion to amend the agenda, otherwise, we'll have to wait till next time. Public participation. Any members of the public wish to participate? Alright, seeing none, I'll close, public participation. Moving on to appointments, there's one, Nadine Rooney to the Board of Health, Mr. O'Rourke.
Yes, Nadine Rooney of 70 Knapp Street to the Board of Health for term ending April 27th, 2018.
Motion by Mr. O'Rourke, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lepalas, discussion, Mr. O'Rourke.
Uh, Ms. Rooney is a registered nurse with over sixteen years of healthcare experience. She is currently employed as a peri-optive nurse at Danbury Hospital. She is eager to serve her community, and her skills and experience will be an excellent addition to this board. This appointment fills the vacancy created by Dr. Michael O'Reilly. Thank you.
Any further discussion regarding this appointment?
Can I just ask?
Sure.
Is that Mr. Rooney's wife's?
Yes, it is. Any further discussion? Alright, seeing none, all of us in favor? Against, motion carries, eight to zero. Moving on to action items. A, Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety, Mr. Lepalas.
Uh, yes, I met, as usual, with Mr. Mandros today. You know, I will do that every time before a town council meeting. Uh, he mentioned that if we approve the bonding tonight as a town council, the Board of Finance will approve it Wednesday. And then he had a discussion with Jim Augustin, Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Ed. He's asking them, he's taking out, the Board of Finance is taking out of Capital Reserve $180,000 to pay for the two trucks as opposed to the budget paying for the two trucks. And he also said that nobody, quote, this is Mr. Mandros's quote, "There's enough money that they have. They have not started even trying to raise money for the, for the field, or the lights, or the bleachers." And, quotes, that's from Mr. Mandros. And if they had to, this could be a two-step process. They can do this, because I said right away, what about, what about this in the field? We've signed contracts already. And he said, "Well, the lights and the bleachers could always wait a year if it has to." So, you remember how Mr. Augustin was so excited about, and he said he had half a million dollars that he could donate? Well, that's kind of not been discussed again. So, he, he mentioned that. Uh, he also talked about the state with all the budget funding, changes that are occurring. He said it's one and a half years out. Fifty percent is some kind of a new grant, and when it's done, the Board of Finance will take care of it. Again, a year and a half out. They built in a cushion to be able to handle the loss that the budget is probably gonna have from the state. And that, that was in the paper the other day. I probably could quote you on how much it was.
Can I ask, is it possible for the council to ask the Board of Finance to consider putting $100,000 in a reserve account so that when that field, when it is done, and they have to take care of it again in six years? I guess the field is only good for six years. It's gonna cost around $600,000. Wouldn't it be a good idea to put a reserve in every year for $100,000 for that?
I think, I think you ask and get back to...
I think that's something, just with all due respect, I think that's something that we would be discussing in our budget deliberations moving forward.
Okay.
But I think it's a good idea. And I'm, I'm fairly confident that it's on both the finance department's radar as well as Board of Finance's radar.
I highly agree with you, Mr. Lepalas. Sure. Good. So, so that was number one. Then, health, Mr. Kellogg does health and EMS, so health first?
Uh, sure. So, the Board of Health will be meeting neck, the first week of May, on Tuesday evening. So, they have not met since the last meeting. I will say, I did have a, um, a conversation with the Chair of the Board of Health in regards to our item from last meeting, which I'll be happy to discuss when we get to it under new business.
Okay.
And as far as EMS, EMS only, there was a special meeting that they conducted for the purposes of the part-time administrator position, and I believe it has been finalized. Yes, so the, the position has been offered and accepted by an individual, so they're moving forward in that regard.
And, uh...
And their, their regular meeting will be, uh, will all, will actually be this week, Wednesday night this week.
And police and fire, there's no report, but the three of us who, who are sitting on PEPs have been looking at, and again, we're, we're not making a decision yet, but we're looking at trying to find a way of increasing senior citizen, either a tax abatement, or, or tax credit, or whatever. And we have a meeting May 5th, which is a Thursday at 4:00 PM. So, it's next week at 4:00 PM. And I had Mrs. Bombero send you the, the agenda. Okay, that's it for me, thank you.
I went to the Commission on Aging.
Oh, good.
And, um, they, uh, they're using some of the, the fund that they got from Lillian's, Wilton's funds to paint the building. Um, they're gonna get the, they have to get their sprinklers tested by Loi, I guess, that's another four grand. And they are developing policies for, have, bringing guests to the senior center for five times per year, per member, at a dollar apiece. And then, the other thing is their tech upgrade still has not been installed. The, the electronics, I guess, have been put in, but not the, not the computers. And, go ahead. Are you doing? Well, I have to go. Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, went to the Board of Ed meeting, and they talked about the state reducing funding for the magnet schools. And also, they received $172,000 rebate from Cigna for prescription drugs. Uh, they, they also indicated that the turf field should have all their approvals by May 5th. They're hiring, they're posting for, for positions because the budget was passed. They talked a great deal about foreign travel, and there was, some members of the board wanted to put a moratorium on traveling abroad because of the problems that they're having. There was a teacher there who spoke very eloquently about why we should not stop that travel. And so, they've decided to table it and, and take a look at it down the road and see. Insurance costs were up by five percent. Kindergarten enrollment is strong this year. Uh, they talked about their capstone project where the kids explore areas of interest. They say that's really going, it's very successful. Kids find out what they wanna do, or what they like and what they don't like. And then, the big thing is, there was a big discussion about the NASIC lunch program. They're going to do away with the federal lunch program for NASIC only. To do that, they're gonna lose about $141,000. But they think they're gonna make it, the people, the kids are not using the cafeteria because, because of the food that's being offered. So, they're gonna really increase, they're gonna put food stations in and, and really increase the, the variety of food that they're gonna serve, and they hope, and they're also gonna increase it by about fifteen percent, the cost. And they hope that they can recapture most of that. They, there's $36,000 in costs that have to be borne because of the kids that, that qualify for the food program. So, they're gonna have to come up with that, but they think they're gonna recapture, and they're gonna do it just for, and you can go in and out of this program on a yearly basis. So, they're gonna, you know, try to, try to see what they can do with that, 'cause the kids are really losing interest. They're also saying that the kids that are in the fields after school, they're really hungry, so they're gonna open it up and maybe have a kiosk there to, and, and they think that they're gonna really be able to recapture those costs. They also said June 13th, Jackie Hollow Recognition Night, and June 14th is NASIC High School graduation. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Uh, just back to Mrs. Lepalas, Mrs. Lepalas's comment about the, the budget. The, the cut, the ECS cut is only proposed so far. The, I'm, if you believe media reports, it will most likely be changed. So, there is a number, but just the governor's number, the legislature hasn't decided anything. So, that number's not concrete at all. Just wanna make sure that's clear.
Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Lepalas, anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Action item B is the Town Council Committee on Planning and Zoning, Public Works, and Parks and Recreation Matters, Mr. Reed.
Um, we have not met since the last meeting, but I do have some, some things to report. One of the things that we're gonna do is extend a hand to Scott Schatzlein over in the Engineering Department to assure that we avoid what happened last budget season. So, now that our budgets are finished, Scott and I have had some preliminary conversations on this, but, and, and Mr. Vavri can involve you as well. So, through that subcommittee, we want to assure that the latest plan that we've put forward for the F-17 budget is actually enacted. So, we went from having the, the position, and that's gotten pulled back, we've rearranged some things. So, I just wanna make sure, from a liaison perspective, we can bring back the council if that's going forward as expected. In addition to that, EDC has a kind of a different remit now. They're, they're a little bit more expanded. I know Mr. Kapoor is, is the liaison from our subcommittee there. So, we should extend a branch to them as well, maybe to come to our next meeting. So, if we can, if we can get some, some good stuff going and have enough to meet, that's what I would like to do, and make sure that EDC is understanding, okay, how they've been budgeted, what are they bringing to the table, what do they want us to know? So, if that, if that's, you know, and I know you're the liaison to that, so I'll reach out to you. Mr. Kapoor, I don't know if you have any ideas in that space, but specifically EDC.
Not currently.
Same stuff, right? It's a stepping dog, so, that's it. And I know Mr. Rooney did have a parking rack update, but, but he's not here, but it wasn't anything too definitive.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Uh, moving on to C, Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters, Mr. O'Rourke.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we took up the issue of the property acquisition agreements, reconstruction of the Pepper Street and multi-use trail. This involved two properties on Pepper Street, 16 Gardner Road and 355 Pepper Street. We discussed how to, how to prepare and move forward, the resolution which would authorize the first electman to execute the transaction, which would involve $2,100 for the price, for the rights for 16 Gardner Road, and $4,175 for Pepper Street. Later on in the meeting, we took up the town council procedural review. We've gotten pretty far along with that, not completed, finished with that. Hope to be able to report that that item has been concluded, and, uh, follow business is still to take up the Board of Ethics, uh, media of procedures.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Uh, action item D is the Strategic Planning Committee. I know that committee has not met, but, Mr. Kellogg, if you wanna give us an update, you're welcome to.
Yes, thank you. As we talked in the last meeting, it was my intent to have a meeting set up by now. However, um, the primary item that I was looking to get on the discussion, for, on the agenda for discussion, was the part-time salary structure. And I had, in, in the process of trying to set it up, I got a email from Ms. Lombardi stating that there is, there was an internal, um, meeting or review to be, that was going to be conducted, and that it would not be practical, or wouldn't behoove us to have that meeting prior to April 29th, or until after April 29th. So, I have instead looked to set something up in the first week of May. My initial polling of availability, it's not looking, it's looking difficult to get something in the first week of May, but we'll try that, or if not, the, the second week. And I know Ms. Lombardi, I gave a chance to ask you earlier, but, uh, we'll catch up offline, try and get some availability, and get that on the agenda. I've also been in touch with Mr. Kreis from the Fire Service in regards to following up on the last, the stuff on fire apparatus, so he knows that that would be on the next agenda as well.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Kapoor.
Just to add some, to shed some light on the part-time stuff, the reason why it's been held up for the last two weeks is because I had sent the, the iteration that we saw in our budget deliberations to Mrs. Mead for correction, because the Board of Finance added back, I believe, at least one, perhaps two part-time positions. So, I wanted to make sure before it came to subcommittee, all the positions were captured. So, Mrs. Mead is looking it over for the internal view, for them to bring to you, so we know that all the data's on one piece of paper, so we're not going back saying you missed this. So, we want to come to you the first time correctly. That's why I signaled a little extra time.
Understood, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Action item E is the EMS Facility Work Group update.
Thank you. So, there hasn't been a meeting, a meeting, a regular meeting would have been scheduled for this week. I have actually canceled that due to an anticipated lack of quorum, but a special meeting is set up for Monday, May 2nd.
Okay, thank you very much. First Electman's update, Mr. Vavri.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just reached out to Kathy Lombardi. She can't make this meeting because of a personal situation, which I kinda knew about, but I thought maybe she'd be here by now. Uh, she did say that she spoke to Ron, and Ron can explain anything you might need to know about it. And she cannot make the next meeting because she is on vacation.
Okay.
So, I'd like Ron to talk about that afterwards. My update, basically, if you haven't seen already, uh, there's gonna be a lot of work being done on a lot of state roads, a lot of side roads. The bridge at Ridgate work has started. There was supposed to be a map out there, I guess it was taken down, about showing how the road is. I'll get that up online, put it out on to all the concerned places, but that is starting now. One thing you will know, may not know, but there will be a, a sidewalk going from basically Monroe L right to Walgreens to help people in their walking environment, so that'll be a good thing. The next thing is, you'll start seeing a lot of, and Mr. Reed, you'll see people on your road. We had a meeting, and the first MetroCOC Public Information Meeting was held last week to get input on 25 and 111 with the MetroCOC Plan. The engineers were there, about thirty-five, forty people from the town were there. But they're gonna start doing this the right way, and actually check the, the side roads, the Spring Hills, the Purdees, the West Maidens, the Peppers, to see what any movement will impact. And I do have a, this, I don't know if this is online yet, I'm pretty sure it is, I haven't checked, I haven't been online lately, um, to check if this has been there, but it's right now in the preliminary stages, so any of you that wanna attend the meeting, there'll be a, a schedule out there. They basically put this meeting together relatively quickly. I mean, I was on vacation, they said they were gonna do it, and they, I'm on vacation, they go, "Oh, we're gonna have it the week you get back." I said, "Well, that's really good." They usually give me a couple weeks' notice. But, um, but a lot of people did show up, we got the word out there, and you'll see a lot of people on the side roads, a lot of people up and down 1, the 25 and 111, so everybody asked, that's why.
Yeah, they put the, they put the strip markers out there.
That's, that's just for Ridgate, yes. Oh, for, on the side roads, they did that, or?
On, on, uh, Spring Hill.
Oh, good. That wasn't supposed to happen until next week.
I ran him over today.
Good. So, that's my report.
They're not there anymore.
They're not there anymore.
And, uh, Mr. Kapoor.
Uh, Mr. Vavri, one quick question. Is there any, um, activity on the, um, the Walmart site? Because I remember when the, you had announced back in October, so there's a shovel, shovel in the ground by April. So, is there any activity over there?
There is no activity yet, other than illegal dirt bike racing. There's still some things that the developer has to work on.
Is there a timeline?
I'm still told by the end of this month, early May.
And the, um, the meeting you just talked about, are you, the one at Monroe L last week? Is there any, um, is there any information from the State DOT about what's gonna happen with that intersection?
Right now, this is just a, a MetroCOC Plan. It still hasn't gone out to the floor of Q yet. It's still in the planning stages.
Will the fixes to that intersection be effective for, by the time the...
No. By the time Walmart's built?
Yeah.
No.
Mr. Kapoor, what intersection is that?
25, 111.
111 and 25. Because I remember the, when the, when Walmart came to P&amp;Z, it was a big box store at that time, the traffic study saw, the traffic study and actually our plan of conservation development had, in five to ten years, a huge log jam. It's already there now.
Yeah.
But compounded over time. So, I didn't know if DOT was gonna take that down and try to do something temporary until they could get something official or permanent while, before Walmart opened.
The, the, the plan for Walmart, as I recall, it has a couple extra turning lanes and a couple extra easing, minute of traffic, but the bottleneck will still happen. Again, whether Walmart went where it's going, or went to the Reed's Warehouse where they were gonna go to, the situation would have been the same. So, but the state, um, we, we, we've been pushing, because most of you know I've been pushing for that intersection for at least five years now, and we finally got on a radar screen with the MetroCOC. So, it's, it's something that we're all looking at, it's something that, um, we had a meeting with Reddicker this past week about that. They still have their own situations with the State DOT, which I won't get into. Some of them was, hey, we're gonna do this now, and next thing you know, it's, it's there. Even with the Ridgate Bridge then, uh, they were supposed to do that last year, they picked it, they did this bridge instead, the one up there, Big Y. The other one was supposed to be built, 'cause that's, that was the worst bridge. That's why they paved it, rebarred it, and did that. So, I don't control what the state does, but Mr. Reddicker gave us all a very good indication that he's trying to, without even state layoffs, he's trying to consolidate his efforts also. And I give him a lot of credit for what he's doing. So, he's spent a lot of time with us.
Yeah. My only question was that, I didn't know that, how much the timeline is gonna shift, and we saw the congestion, we saw a report on congestion, so I didn't know if we were being proactive about making sure that that was gonna be alleviated when that opens, because it's gonna be, I mean, we all know what it's gonna be like, we know what it's like now.
The one thing I can tell you, and the traffic calendar was really amazing to me, that the turn onto 111 is twenty, almost 22,000 cars a day. Turn on, on 111 to go straight is only nineteen. So, the numbers that they were working on originally may not have been the most accurate. We have the most accurate numbers now. So, I'm not gonna say that the bottleneck will not happen, but it already happens around the states, St. Stephen's Church is now. Without getting into a lot of the other stuff that's going on, uh, it's still gonna be a bottleneck, it's still gonna be a mess. Is it gonna be done with this traffic study? No. But the traffic that we saw wasn't the same traffic that P&amp;Z saw, it's actually a little bit less, a couple thousand cars.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions or comments, or Mr. Vavri?
I just have one.
Yes, Mr. Reed.
Did the, did the state give you any inclination as to the upcoming layoffs, which they've been pretty forthright about, and the, the, their Public Works Department's gonna be impacted? Did they talk about the timing of that, and when that, how that could actually impact?
They, they, I can tell you that there's two different, JP would be a good person, 'cause I just happened to read something he wrote today. There are two different versions of the budget. As you know, certain people up there don't listen to the minority. There's a way that this could be done without layoffs, with, with other movements. We're hoping that, that Republican plan is, is at least listened to this time around. Uh, we're hoping there's not as many layoffs as, as they say. But beyond that, same thing you read in the paper, and in JP's, I think David Tugliano put something out also, about other mitigation factors.
Okay.
Mr. Vavri, I have a question for you, bless you. We have in our communication, last meeting and this meeting, a, a letter that was generated by Mr. Agustin regarding the security for the primary tomorrow.
Yes.
And a response from the registrars as well.
Yes.
Can you just give us an update as to exactly what is happening, if anything? Has it improved that situation?
Nothing. Nothing right now. After talking to Ms. Coniff and Ms., Mr. Pay, I applaud them. We were all taken aback from the timing of this letter. Mr. Pay, Ms. Coniff, Chris Nowacki, Jack Zamary, uh, I forgot who else went out, and after 12:14, and after we got all our safety issues, concerns, there was no indication at all from Mr. Agustin that this would be coming. I know there's a few people on the Board of Education that are parents that are afraid of security because of the volume they're gonna get tomorrow, hopefully, and, um, there were a lot of things bantered about. Mr. Agustin, and maybe rightfully so, wants to change the voting areas to the firehouses and the senior center. We already know that's not gonna work, the schools are very secure. Again, Mr. Mr. Coniff and Mr. Pay and all these people went out and, and made sure everything was safe, assured everybody was all safe, and we were pretty much taken aback of, of the whole thing. But nothing's gonna change for this election. If anything, personally, I like to add voting locations, me personally, I think the more people come out, the vote easier, we make it, the better. But we were taken aback by this, and, uh, I told them nothing would be happening until after this election. I can't afford to put four more police at the locations and, and say, say they're gonna be there full-time. It's gonna cost money, which obviously we didn't budget for. So, it was a, a poor timing thing, so at the bequest of Ms. Coniff and Mr. Pay, I'm gonna hold off the meeting until well after the, uh, this primary.
Was there a formal response from your office made to Mr. Agustin?
Not in writing. Not in writing, because I, Ms. Ms. Coniff and Mr. Pay did have a reply.
Well, I just wanna be clear that there are, there are a number of issues where, I think we're generalizing Mr. Agustin's letter. The first recommendation was that there would be increased police presence at the voting locations. The second recommendation was that we, in fact, change the polling locations to, and I think you've addressed that, and I think you've also addressed the refusal or inability, I guess, for...
The inability, really. There will, there will be police there.
We do have a, a reserve, although that could have been used for that, correct?
We do.
Continuancy?
We, we, we do, but it was, I, I didn't feel the, the need, and he, he agreed that, let's see, see how things go. I can tell you, other towns decided to do in service days.
Let's see how things go? We're talking about security of our children in our schools.
There, there's, there will be no security problems. There'll, there'll be police there, but not throughout the day.
Good, 'cause I can tell you, I personally brought this to the attention of, um, the Board of Ed and Mr. Agustin as a citizen, not as anything else, because, you know, where my polling location is, um, to be frank, you're able to walk into the location during school, vote, and walk right into the school. Just so you're aware.
Mm-hmm, I do know that.
Okay, and that's extremely dangerous, and my concern is that many of our neighboring communities decided to cancel school, which was also a solution, and like, I guess ultimately what I'm trying to get at is, was that ever recommended, discussed?
Uh, that was...
At all in the conversation? Because what I see is, and it's disappointing to me, what I see is a letter that was generated by Mr. Augustine, and I see no response, banter, other discussion about this, and I, I consider it, and I'm someone who generally doesn't consider these issues to be of concern, um, to be a, a, a serious concern.
They, I can tell you honestly that they did not mention your name. They, they didn't mention...
I'm sure I'm not the only one that mentioned it, but...
Yeah, but they, they also, I, I said to them, I, Ms. Ms. Coniff and, and Mr. Pay did write a letter back. Um, but I had a discussion with them, why, why now, why, why bring this up right now, a week before? And why don't, why didn't you take into consideration like other towns are doing?
Well, because a lot of other towns did it during the same time. Milford had considered it, they actually discussed it, my understanding is, my, my conversations with officials in Milford, they discussed it. Um, it was agreed that, as we, as we, uh, I guess, uh, theorized that everything would be okay, they then reconsidered it, rediscussed it, and changed their opinion, as did Greenwich, as did many other communities. So I, I just, I'm concerned that there was, I personally didn't see any formal response from either, from, from the town side as to what was not being done and why.
Okay. Again, I, I...
If I wasn't on town council, I probably wouldn't know the answer, but...
Yeah, I, I didn't, I, I spoke to Mr. Augustine, I told him we would meet afterwards. Um, we've had multiple elections in there, in that location for a couple of years now. It was never brought to anybody's attention before, and even though, yes, it's gonna be a lot more people, we can also put monitors at those tables also, people sitting right there, so nobody goes through there.
My, that's my point, so was there a formal response, was there a discussion, was there a change in policy? Was there a change in protocol, what, if anything was done?
That would be, I would have to ask the registrar voters, but they're very happy with what they have, are putting out tomorrow. The other school, the, the other schools don't have the same situations Monroe does. Um, and speak, the Ms. Coniff and Mr. Pay, they said they have everything handled. I didn't see the need for a, a formal reply back.
So our, our registrars have the security of the voting locations in our schools handled?
They, that's, I'm very confident that they said they do, so yes.
Okay. Mr. Reed?
Piggybacking on that, stole my thunder. Did they, did they take in any third-party security organization or the police?
No.
So Sue Coniff and Judy Strupay assessed the security of our schools, with all due respect to those two?
No, that's not what I, I said.
I just want, I'm giving you that opportunity to, I just, 'cause, yeah, what, what is, who did the security assessment of our schools?
The security a- aspect of the schools was, again, after twelve-fourteen, while we were putting these, these other measures in for the past three or four years, um, it was decided by our, our superintendent, Chris Nowacki, our police, the registrar voters, this was all decided a couple of years back, by, by a, a committee of people, it wasn't just Sue or, or, or...
So is, is, am I, am I to understand that Jim Augustine, our superintendent, is differing from the, the twelve-fourteen assessment?
He is.
So he's saying that's not good enough now, we need something else?
I, I think, and now hearing from maybe more parents, he, he didn't say anything to me about any parents saying this, this is him. Uh, this is the first time I'm hearing any parents have concerns, he, he basically, and I see him a lot. He didn't say there's any parental concerns, so as far as I'm reading into this, um, this is just from him. I do know, I do know that Gabby de Blasi has been asking to get out of schools for a long time, because it's a, a, a change in how they do things as it is, she's been asking that well before twelve-fourteen.
So, okay, so there's a twelve, just one last question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
There's one, there's, so the, so we have the assessment that was done prior, I was wanting to show you how this right? A study was done by a collective group of individuals, public work, sounds like it was done the right way, so that's good. Our superintendent of schools is, is differing from that now.
Yes.
We have some general concerns about maintaining school attendance that day, or not leveraging fully the Sally ports and things like that were created, because we have some gaps in security. All right, so if I've got that assessment right, we've, we've then turned around and said, from an executive perspective, we're not gonna, we're not gonna spin up four more, four more police presence. Is it too late for that?
All right, I, I, it, it's never too late, um, I don't know how the shift, shifts go in, I mean, I can always ask, but I have to stress, we've been doing the same thing for many years.
Yeah, this is an interesting primary, though.
I, I'm with you.
I think, I think it's just an interesting primary, and just, you know, we're having a discussion here, right? Playing chess from the same side of the table.
Yeah.
I think we should be asking, I think certainly Monroe L, it just happens to Mr. Leedo, and I have daughters at that school, but that is the one with, with a, with a security gap, there's a choke point through that auditorium. We should be assessing that pretty severely.
It's through the gym.
It's the same thing there, the auditorium, well, the auditorium is the calf, and then, right, so the gym, the place where you walk into the voting, and then you can take the left and go into the school. That's definitely a choke point, that's not manned, and it shouldn't be manned by a teacher, it shouldn't be managed by, you know, manned by the custodian or anybody like that, it should be manned by a cop, by an officer on duty.
So you ask that for every election from here on in?
No, I, I don't know if I'm, I'm really saying that, I think we do need to assess overall how, how we do elections here, I think that's one thing, but this is a very interesting election, there's a lot of polarity, there's a lot of divisiveness in the, in the voting public. There have reports in other states of people visiting other towns and taking advantage of certain things. And it's a divisive election, sadly, so I think we should do whatever we can to...
One thing I, I can ask, and I, and I, this is the first time we're hearing it from actual, I mean, I haven't even seen, I haven't, I haven't even seen this in social media, so this is the first time I'm actually hearing of this, but this is exactly what I'm saying. If, if this was a concern of, of yours, either one of you, you could have brought up to me, I could have...
You know, I, I'm not really sure, I mean, I don't wanna get into a back and forth, we're dais here, but, you know, I'm not really sure it was until I just read this letter from, you know, Jim Augustine. We have, you know, I'm big into decisions right matrices, and you, you put people in, you put people in authority because they have that authority, they have that oversight, they have that insight. Our superintendent of schools, timing or not, you know, maybe he just woke up one day and had an epiphany, I have no idea.
I can't tell you that he spoke...
He's a trusted individual, and he's, he's a, he's a friendly, right, he's a friendly, and he's got, he's got a thought here, and I think we should seriously consider that, what I'm hearing is, we more talked about it, didn't do anything about it, so...
Well, I can tell you that John Salvatore, the chief, is also here on this CC, and he has spoken to James Augustine also, and...
Are you speaking for John Salvatore, you're speaking for the chief of police?
I am not, but he was on this, and he basically told me that he feels the security is adequate. All right, so I, I can, again...
Mr. Vavrik, if I may jump in, you just admitted on the record that you, that the situation in Monroe Elementary is different than other two schools.
Exactly.
Okay, so if it's different...
But our police chief thinks it's safe, says it's safe.
And so you're, you're telling me, and you're telling this council on the town, that he went personally and examined all of the polling locations? He's familiar with the polling business, and the polling business and applications, and he spoke to the registrars, and he understands firsthand each of the polling locations? Because if that's true, if that's true, I take personal offense to that. Because I can tell you right now, I can walk into Monroe Elementary School, vote, and walk right through the doors into the school.
Then I will bring that up with the police chief.
And you admitted on the record that that situation is different than other schools.
I, I did.
Okay.
Our police chief doesn't have an issue with it.
And, and that's in writing somewhere, there's been no formal response, and let me ask you this, when was your last update, first elected update, on your listserv? When was the last update you sent out?
Last week.
Oh, well, how about before that?
Week before.
Okay, did you update any of the people on your listserv about this situation, and what the town's position is, and what Mr. Augustine said, and what's going on out there, so they can make a determination whether they...
Frank, 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 I'm not going back and forth with you.
I'm asking you a question.
These people saw this, all, everybody on here, Donna Lane, Frank Leedo...
How about the community?
Did, did Frank Leedo bring this up to me, other than tonight?
You weren't at the last meeting.
Can you pick up a phone?
You weren't at the last meeting.
Can you pick up a phone?
I did, I did what I was supposed to do, and I was waiting for a formal response.
Let's not get into this.
There's not been a response.
Let's not get into this, Frank.
Could we, could we ask that you have a conversation with the chief?
I definitely will.
At least about Monroe L?
Definitely.
Then I think through a strategic, through a subcommittee, we should discuss the future of election polling, because they're just gonna get more and more divisive.
Um, we're happy discussing the future, but this is, this has been out there, and I, and I think based upon your comments that the situation in Monroe is different, different, I think something different maybe should be done at that location.
Frank, it's been here since April seventh, you were on it.
I am on it.
Pick up a phone, come in, talk to us, you have it.
Absolutely, I did my, I did my job, I've talked to the individual I have to, and this is business that we're discussing in a public forum, this is not a personal, this is not a personal issue, this is a town council matter. If you were at the last meeting, we would have had this discussion.
Frank, let's not go there, come on.
Any other comments or questions?
Can we just get some finality to this?
Absolutely.
What is the, what's the action item?
I will talk, the chief, as a matter of fact, I'll text him right now.
When is the primary?
Tomorrow.
Oh, oh, tomorrow. Okay.
I mean, if we need to relinquish funds, whatever, I mean, I just, yeah, in retrospect, right?
Anything else?
Are we certain there are no other choke points or anything like that egresses into any of the other schools?
I don't vote in any of the schools, so I would, I would ask.
Massacre's gotta be porous, I mean, I...
They're all attached, all the polling places are attached to the schools.
Yeah.
Massacre could be, if certain buildings were locked, it would be, it would be secure, but I don't know.
I, I would think as you go into the outdoor, you go to the right, that door is locked, I think, generally, but you can go down the stairs to the gym.
Yeah, this is, it's, it's, we could probably talk about this all night, I'm just like, for example, on, on election day, when we, when we hold school at an elementary school, do they have recess outside? I'm reading right here that it sounds like if it's not inclement weather, the kids are gonna be outside at recess.
Also, I'm referring...
Yeah, you know what I mean, like, we, we should, we should re-bring this up.
My, my, if I may, my concern, my, I trust those who are making the decisions, if those decisions have indeed been made upon the right information, my concern is, as you pointed out, Mr. Vavrik, this letter has been out there for some time, and there has been no formal response from the town. So me picking up the telephone and personally asking you what the town is doing does not inform the citizens of the town of Monroe as to what is going on, and that is necessary, and that has not been done.
Tonight is the first night I heard any parental, and I'm pretty in tune to the, to the social media part of it. This, you, this is the first time I'm hearing any parental complaints, or any type of, any type of activity. So I will look into it, as Mr. Reed said, I'm, I'm reaching out now.
Mr. Augustine represents all of the parents of the school system. That is his job. Anything else?
Nope.
No.
Um, Ms. Martin?
Well, just, um, it, tomorrow is the big concern, because tomorrow is the potential for if there is probably ever going to be any out of the ordinary condition, it would be tomorrow, because of the notoriety of the whole situation, the people running, and it's probably got more attention than, than a lot of primaries that we've had in the past, or perhaps will in the future. Um, and I, I, I wonder how, how do we address something that's going to start at six o'clock tomorrow morning? Um, at nine o'clock tonight? I mean, that's, that's probably all of our concern. And, um, I, I would just say, I, I had been away, um, visiting family over the vacation, was not even aware of this letter. When, did, did the council get copies of this letter?
Chairman did.
Yes, the council did as well.
Two, two weeks ago?
Yes.
So in the last packet?
It was a, there was an update, I believe, uh, and...
First time I saw it was through digital last week.
It was an update digitally.
I think, I think if you tried to, and again, I think we're starting to speak a little bit informally here, right? But I think if you asked the chief to find six police officers that would be willing to do this, put them out, I, I have no doubt that the Monroe's finest will have an issue with that. Give them what they want. There's a short time of material obligation they have.
Well, you think if you have someone who's on special duty...
Yeah, we have special duty contract with them, they get X amount of dollars per hour, done.
I mean, it's the le- lethal power, but I think if we reach out to the chief, he might be able to do something.
Yeah, he'll make, he'll make some calls.
I, 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 my, um, I was, my comments to Mr. Augustine were, as a concerned parent, they're not, I didn't think they were ripe for, nor did I, was I trying to create this type of discussion as the chairman of town council, but I, I also don't think it's the appropriate function of the town council. My concern is, uh, I was not aware of any formal response that had existed to this date, and I am concerned with the lack of information.
There's a whole, there's a whole concept of this, right? I mean, I, there's a whole concept around school safety, and, for example, some of the things that are going on in the state of Connecticut with other councils, or representative town committees, and boards of ed, or explicit line items from a secure perspective in the board of that budget, um, town council for, for funding security during elections. Uh, I know for, for a fact Principal Cobb's is putting in an active shooter protocol right now. So, you know, we got a lot of things going on, but I think it, it might be a good idea if we were all on the same page across all our committees to understand what we're doing about safety in town. These are, these are low-hanging fruit, this is the easy stuff to do, there are protocols all over the United States right now that can be beg, barred, and steamed on how to do this, stolen, stolen.
Agreed, agreed.
Did you say steal?
Agreed, but the, the point is, as you and Ms. Martin pointed out, this, this primary presents a, presented a unique, I think, historically, historically need in our position, so I think that's what was driving it.
And, and the presidential will be no different.
All right, move on, um...
Again, Ron is available to talk about that transfer if you want.
Unfinished business, we have nothing, is there a motion to, uh, add as item F the Human Resources Funds Transfer Resolution to the agenda?
Subtle.
Motion by Mr. Palace, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kapoor, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Against, that motion carries eight to zero, so F, under new business, will now read Human Resources Funds Transfer Resolution. Um, the memo from Ms. Lombardi isn't everybody's packet, if you'd like to listen to that. Uh, moving on, new business, A, donation from the Kimbo Group to Sprint for Monroe, uh, Ms. La Palace?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation for Sprint for Monroe in the amount of three thousand dollars from the Kimbo Group LLC.
Motion by Mr. La Palace, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kapoor, discussion? As the council knows, large donations, uh, will be action items on our agenda, this was a large donation, so we thought it was appropriate for that action, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Against, motion carries eight to zero. Mr. Vavrik, can you be sure that your office, if they haven't already, sends out a thank you, a special thank you to the Kimbo Group for that donation?
It's already been done.
Thank you. Um, new business, B, Health Department Fee Schedule, actually, it's an unfinished business item, but it's on a new business. Um, I, Mr. Kapor, do you want to give us a quick update on what we're gonna do?
I can give you a quick update, this, uh, actually, I'm gonna ask that we, uh, um, just hold this for another, uh, for another couple of weeks, or, I'm sorry, until our next meeting. I did have a conversation with the Health Director and the Chair of the Board of Health regards to the feedback from our last meeting, um, looking at, uh, basically just the one, that one item regarding the, uh, temporary events for the Class One and Twos, and I think they're certainly willing to, uh, look at that again and, you know, and address that, perhaps make that even lower. Um, in, in the same vein, um, just based upon the discussion that we had, I also, um, asked them to, once again, uh, just indulge us, or indulge me, and, and look at the, um, the whole issue of, of proration, I know was troubling administratively, but I was looking to see if there may be some other options available to, uh, to late, you know, late in the year, um, businesses that sign up. So they, they will take both that up, uh, both those items up at their next meeting, and I think there is, uh, definitely willingness to try and, uh, address that, and the Health Director was taking a second look at area towns to see if there are any other, uh, best practices that we might, you know, be able to leverage, so...
And for those members of council, thank you, Mr. Kapor, for those members of council weren't present last meeting, um, basically the two issues that, um, um, the council members present thought were, um, ripe for maybe taking it back to, uh, the Board of Health, uh, in light of the fact that it wasn't a time urgent matter, were, um, the fees for some of the smaller charity events being, uh, too cumbersome to subvert the purpose of the charity event, uh, although we, um, you know, I wanna applaud the board for recognizing that there are certain, uh, costs incurred by the town redoing applications for all organizations, including nonprofits. And the second was, um, should there be any proration for, um, licensed applications for the annual fee? If a business is required to, um, pay the premium for the full year fee and only has a small period of time left on that annual fee, so those are the two issues that went back to the year, so, um, we'll discuss that on a later date. But thank you for the update, Mr. Kapor. Um, moving on to see resolution regarding appropriation and... Moving on to C, resolution regarding appropriation and bond authorization of $810,000 for the purchase of trucks and equipment for the Department of Public Works. Uh, resolution, Mr. La Palace?
I move to adopt the following resolution as written and incorporated into the body of the resolution. Resolution regarding an appropriation and bond authorization of $810,000 for the purpose of trucks and equipment for the Department of Public Works.
Is there a, uh, motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
I move to waive the resolution.
Motion by, uh, motion to waive by Mr. Kapoor, second by, uh, Mr. O'Rourke. Is there any discussion on the waiving of the motion in the full text? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, waiving of the reading? That motion carries eight to zero. Is there a motion that the resolution be adopted as introduced? Motion by Ms. La Palace is our second. Second by Mr. O'Rourke. Uh, Mr. Bonowski is here this evening to discuss any aspect of this that the council thinks is appropriate. Um, we knew this was coming during our budget deliberations. Um, I did ask, uh, Mr. Bonowski, um, to essentially send, forward me the email from our bond counsel, Marie Fallon, that she drafted, uh, the text of the resolution, and I do have that email, so it did come from her, which is in essence beyond a legal opinion. It's her work. So, um, I think it's appropriate, uh, to move forward. If anybody has any questions on the substance, we do have the full resolution in our packet. Uh, Mr. Bonowski's here for that purpose. Any discussion on council at all? Questions? Okay. All right, so seeing none, um, I'll call for a vote on the resolution. All those in favor? And against, motion carries eight to zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to D, another resolution, this one regarding the appropriation and bond authorization of $100,000 for the Stepney Elementary School oil tank removal and replacement project. So routine, Ms. La Palace?
I move to adopt the following resolution as written and incorporate into the body of the resolution. Be it resolved that an appropriation and bond authorization of $100,000 for Stepney Elementary School oil tank removal and replacement project.
All right, so Ms. La Palace has read the resolution. Is there a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
Sub move.
Motion by Mr. O'Rourke is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Reed. Uh, discussion on the waiver? Seeing none, all those in favor of the waiver? Motion carries eight to zero. Uh, is there a, a motion, uh, that said resolution be adopted and introduced?
Sub move.
As written. Motion by Ms. La Palace, second. Second by Mr. Kellogg. Uh, again, did go to the last conversation. I'd be aware that this was coming and what the purpose was for. We have the full, uh, text and body of the resolution drafted by our bond counsel, Marie Fallon. I have the email from her indicating same. Uh, Mr. Bonowski is here to answer any questions regarding this? Should we have any?
I just had one question.
Sure.
I was aware it was coming. Should've asked it last time, so that's on me. I thought the last time we got this, um, the presentation on underground storage tanks, that it was in totality?
Right.
With the exception of Mastic, which was already remediated. Where'd this one come from? Mr. Bonowski?
You're, you're talking about the, uh-
We had, we had eleven or so tanks. Was that purely just the town tanks? And that, that's the D, that's the D mark? Got it. Answered.
Anything else?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Nope.
All right, uh, seeing none, all those in favor? And against, this motion carries eight to zero.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
For, um, C, do we need town meeting? Or do we have to wait for the board of finance approval?
We do need a town meeting, thank you. We need a town meeting for C and-
No, not for, not for-
No, over 150.
Cause it's C and E?
We need them for both, cause it's a, it's a bond, it's a bond. Bonding does not have anything to do with the threshold. Special appropriation of 150 or above or bonding, so we need them for both. Thank you for reminding me. So let me, I'm not sure I had to do it after, but as well, so let's do it. All right, um, are we thinking, uh, Mr. Bonowski, before I move ahead and, uh, call for and vote on the town meeting, are we thinking a certain period of time for that?
I know board of finance is looking to have a, uh-
Wednesday, right?
Uh, actually Thursday, they couldn't get one for Wednesday, so they're planning on going out this Monday, Thursday.
Okay.
So, I believe historically we wanted to pick a day council meeting.
Correct. So two weeks may be too, too soon? Or you think we can make it two weeks? Okay, let's do it then. So that would be, uh, May ninth, is that correct? Is that our next, next meeting?
Yes, seven, eight, nine, yes.
May ninth, okay. So, is there a motion that contingent upon board of finance approval, a town meeting be warned and held on May ninth, 2016 at- 7:00 PM in Monroe Town Council chambers and Monroe Town Hall, to consider and act upon the bond resolution that the town clerk caused legal notice of such meeting to be posted and published in accordance with the law?
Sub move.
Motion by Ms. La Palace is our second. Second by Mr. Reed. Uh, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero. Thank you for that, Mr. Kapoor. We'll move on to the next.
Do we, do we have to do two vote, two town meeting?
We do. So that was for for the trucks. 7:00 PM. And, um, may I have a motion that sub, subject to and continued upon board of finance approval, a town meeting, uh, be warned and held on May ninth, 2016 at 7:30 PM in Monroe Town Council chambers and Monroe Town Hall, to consider and act upon the bond resolution. Just to be clear, the bond resolution for 7:30 is regarding the Stepney Elementary School oil tank removal and replacement project in the amount of $100,000, and further that the town clerk caused legal notice of such meeting to be posted and published in accordance with the law.
Sub move.
Motion by Ms. La Palace is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kapoor. Any discussion regarding this town? Call for a town meeting. All right, seeing none, all those in favor? This motion carries eight to zero. Mr. Reddick, are we clear on that one?
Yeah.
You're probably more clear than I am, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kapoor. All right. Moving on to E, uh, we have now the resolution regarding state of Connecticut DOT agreements for right-of-way acquisitions related to the reconstruction of Pepper Street and the multi-use trail for properties located at 16 Garter Road and 355 Pepper Street. Ms. La Palace?
I move to adopt the following resolution as written and incorporate into the body of the resolution. This one has a few sections I think that should be read. Let's see, be it resolved, whereas the town council approved a resolution supporting the project in part of the reconstruction of Pepper Street as construction of a multi-use trail at a meeting held on, uh, July 30th, 2012, and whereas the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation has entered into an agreement with the town of Monroe to perform and coordinate all needed rights and ways, acquisitions for the above referenced project, and whereas the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation has submitted an offer of, uh, $4,175 to the town of Monroe, being in abutting property parceloner to the Pepper Street right-of-way for an easement on an abutting property at 355 Pepper Street for construction and public use of a multi-use trail for transportation purposes in conjunction with the above referenced project, and whereas the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation has submitted an offer of $2,100 to the town of Monroe, being in abutting property parceloner to the Pepper Street right-of-way for an easement on an abutting property at 16 Garter Road for aerial highway appurtenances, sloping highway construction, and associated public use relative to the above referenced project. Now therefore be resolved, the town council does hereby agree that Stephen J. Fabrick, as first electman of the town of Monroe, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents associated with the right-of-way acquisition agreements for 355 Pepper Street and 16 Garter Road on behalf of the town of Monroe. And, uh, Mr. Lido will sign this. Francis Lido, Chairman, Monroe Town Council.
Thank you, Ms. La Palace. That is the resolution. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Reed. Uh, is there any discussion on this? I'll, I'll state before, uh, before any discussion, that LNA did review, um, both of, both resolutions in detail, uh, with the proposed easements and the like, uh, and, uh, Mr. Schatzlin was present to explain it in, in detail. It was passed unanimously for consideration by town council.
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question for the first electman. Mr. Vavrick, the, what you sent up, or what was, I shouldn't say what you sent up, what was in our packets? The state of Connecticut DOT has the acceptance agreement signed by you with a date of April 6th, 2016. So the resolution before us authorizes and directs you to execute the agreements. Are the agreements already executed?
What happened is, the project manager, um, basically said to us, in, in his opinion, that we did not need to have a resolution on this. They've done small projects, small projects like this before, just an overwrite, and then, um, signed it, and then he brought it back to legal and the new, there's a new legal team there, and they decided on these resolutions. As a matter of fact, he wanted all, all of the other projects that we're doing upcoming to have one resolution. I said no to that. We'll, we'll do these individually. So there's a new legal council up there that basically shifted the way they wanted to do things. Originally, this was too small for resolution, but I abided by their, but after we signed this, it went up there and he came back and said, new legal team wants this done.
But the legal team didn't know this before, it was a change between-
I, I, I can, a- as Scott and I were sitting in that room and saying, are you sure? He said yes. And then we get a call back as soon as he faxed them off and said, the new people want it changed. They want resolutions for this. So that's the way we did it.
For the record, I'm fairly confident that the charter would prohibit any action of the first electman in this regard absent town council approval, so regardless of whether the legal team, the state of the manager, changed protocol, it's still, it's still, the town is already giving up legal rights to land in exchange for money, which I think is covered by our charter.
I'm just, it, 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 once again, it seems frustrating to me that it's already been executed. I mean, what if we vote no on this? Then, then what? This is like the fifth or sixth time that we have stepped before, it's been executed before we talked about it.
For this amount of money, if we've done it countless many times, I realize it's wrong.
It keeps happening though.
We've done it for years.
So let's keep doing it wrong for years, cause that makes sense.
Okay.
Anything else? Further discussion? All right, all those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero. Uh, lastly, we have item F, which is the human resources funds, uh, transfer resolution. Ms. La Palace?
And be it resolved that in accordance with chapter eight, section 7F of the town charter, the following transfer be approved. So we have, um, human resources insurance, $39,000, to human resources salary, other $9,000, and human resources labor relations, $30,000, for a total of, uh, an equal $39,000.
Thank you, Ms. La Palace. Is there, motion by Ms. Palace is our second. Second by Mr. Reed. Uh, discussion, Mr. Bonowski is, is here, so Ms. Bonowski, I'll just give you the four real quick. Thank you. Just, I guess, just tell us the reason that this was necessar-
Sure. I'll start with the, uh, labor relations. Um, basically, we're, uh, projecting, we're gonna go over budget, you know, and it, and it's from a variety of reasons. The, uh, the 401A plan that came out of the highway negotiations, we had to hire, uh, an attorney to draft the document that came out of the, uh, that, uh, that hit that account. We're currently involved in some board of ed para negotiations, and first question is, why are we absorbing those costs? It's cause it's related to the town pension plan. Okay, and-
Excuse me, but is the board of education paying a share of it?
Uh, they are not.
Why not?
Cause it's, I, I guess, uh, for starters, we haven't asked them to at this point, and it is a town negotiation, cause it is the town pension.
But it's their, but it's their pension.
It's a town negotiation.
It's not, it's one pension plan. It was split apart years ago incorrectly.
So now the town is going to bear the cost of anything, the board of edu-
Board of Ed assets.
Is the town gonna start to bear the cost of any, any, uh, uh, things that the, the board of education changes? It's then gonna be the town's burden?
That the board of ed, well, this, this isn't a board of ed- This isn't a board of ed change. This is a bargaining, uh, group in the board of education that feels they have a right to, uh, participate in the town pension plan. Cause there are board of ed employees in that plan.
So, so the pot is one pot again?
Two pools of assets, one plan. It's always been one plan.
One plan, two pools, but the, but the assets are all one now, again? So any amendments?
Two pools of assets in one plan. So they're, they're not, the assets are not co-meg.
So, if, if the board of education makes an amendment or, or adds something, enhances the plan, what happens? Does the town also then, theirs is enhanced? Or, look, years ago, the board of education was making all kinds of, of, of deals and enhancing and improving their part of the pension plan. And that's why it was separated to begin with, because the town was, was paying for all of those changes.
The, the problem is, is when it was separated, um, it was still legally one plan, and that's why we got in trouble with the IRS, and we had to pull it back together.
But that doesn't answer the question, is when they improve their plan, who's picking up the tab for that?
Well, they're not improving their plan, we're improving the plan.
No, no, they, they inherently, historically, improved their plan over the years.
Back in the day.
Back in the day, and the town was picking up the cost of that, and that's why that plan was separated. I separated it, by the way.
You didn't do it right.
Pardon?
You didn't do it right, that's why we're going after it.
All right, listen, we need to have more structure to this. I let it go a little bit.
Okay.
If, if we may, can we just let Mr. Bonowski continue and finish his explanation?
I, I can't answer what's gonna happen in the future.
I have-
There's nothing, you know, since it's been pulled back together, nothing has, uh, you know, this is a, a separate bargaining unit that, uh, the cost is being borne by the town at this point.
By the way, let's just keep in mind, he's graciously doing us a favor by just having to be here this evening. And Ms. Lombardi, Ms. Lombardi, if she had wanted this transfer, she should've been here this evening, and she's not. So if you have questions for her, please let me know that you have questions for her, and when she gets back and she can attend a meeting in four to six weeks, we can certainly have a discussion at that time. If you think it's appropriate, just keep that in mind.
All right, thank you.
So, so the, uh, labor relations are gonna, they're tracking about where they tracked last year, which we, we did go over budget in that, in, uh, that line item last year. It's gonna end up, the budget is about 70, it's projecting it out to be about 100. So that's where the, uh, why we need the additional 30. The additional line, um, I think everyone on council is aware of the, uh, uh, raise that was given to the HR assistant during the tax share that was discussed during the, uh, uh, budget process. We are projecting out that that line item will be over budget by 9,000. I do wanna say that the savings garnered in, in, um, negotiating the insurance line where the, the, the funding is coming to, uh, cover the labor negotiations and the HR salary, um, was the, one of the main reasons to try and, uh, retain that HR assistant at that point in time, which, um, she was instrumental in, um, the, uh, added work of, uh, changing over the insurance carrier at that time. So, that's basically, uh, that's basically the transfer. Anyone has any more intent questions or needs any other clarification on that?
Miss can't get this time. Do you wanna continue with question of Mr. Bonowski, or are you satisfied?
No, but I would like to say to, to Mr. Vavrick that I had nothing to do with the legalities of changing, of, of splitting that. It was my request that they be split. And then Pullman and Conley took care of it, and the actuary, not me.
Anybody else have any questions? Comments? All right, seeing none, uh, all those in favor? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the transfer? And against, motion carries eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Bonowski, for volunteering.
I did get a note back from Mr. Salvatore. If you'd like to discuss that?
Sure.
As I said, that I was assured by the chief that everything was going to be taken care of, and everything would be safe, and you wanted in writing from the chief, we have a plan for tomorrow with the staff that I have, that is all I will share publicly. The one thing that the chief has been very guarded about since 1214 is not putting all of his cards on the table, but I was assured by him they would be safe, and that's what I was trying to get out, but I didn't get a formal, basically what I thought he was going to say, we have a plan for tomorrow with the staff that I have, and that's all shared publicly. So...
Just so the record's clear, I don't recall one member of council asking for anything from the chief in writing, I think we were...
Right.
We wanted to assure the chief...
I assured you you were safe.
Excuse me?
I assured you all that the kids were going to be safe.
Okay.
And with...
Can I just, can I just, Mr. Reed, some? The reason I think I spoke is, I honed in, I locked in on the comment, I think we later elaborated on it, and I locked in on the comment that Conifan Stroupay did the security assessment.
No, they did it with people.
Which probably got us to go a little bit off, but it's fine. I will though say on record, I do think council, the board of ed, and, and the chief of police, as well as your office, should discuss school safety.
Well, we'll be, that's what I said, after this is over, we'll be discussing.
After this is over. And it's not, the impetus tonight seems to be the primary, but that, that should not be the impetus for that discussion.
I would do 100%.
Any further comments? Second public participation, seeing none, I'll close, second public participation. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Motion by Ms. Palace, second. Second by Mr. O'Rourke, all those in favor?
Not doing it, are you?
Motion carries eight to zero, we are adjourned.